Featuring one of our soon to be beloved, as you can feature, Jennifer Frichette. And Alex Assam, so it's the spirit house.
Well, we're seeing that loud and making people go, "Oh, we play." Are you guys ready? Are you guys ready? All right, one, two, one, two, three, four.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice from sin.
Agenda item number two is public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Quinney.
Agenda item number five is the approval of minutes. First, we're going to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of May 13th, 2014. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mrs. Donovan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion on the minutes of the May 13th meeting?
I would just like to, to you, Madam Chair. Dr. O'Leary has not been on the roll call, or he has been but hasn't been called out. And it wasn't done at that time, so I'd like to have that changed to his name being called at the meetings.
Yep, the roll call is to provide members in attendance, and I was told that as long as we note that he's not here, because it's been a long-term absence, but we certainly can note that Dr. O'Leary is absent this evening. Thank you, and I appreciate that. Okay, motion to approve the minutes of the May 13th meeting. And going forward, Mr. Levo, I'll do that as well. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Congdon. Mrs. Dunivan. Mrs. Quinney. Mr. Levo. Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes for the school committee meeting and Southbridge High School Student Council meeting that took place on May 21st, 2014 at Southbridge High School. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Congdon.
I'd just like to provide a brief report of what transpired at the meeting. The meeting date was on May 21st, and it was another joint monthly meeting with the school committee and members of the student council. The students, we reviewed, the first item in the agenda was to review the student handbook, and for the students to provide some feedback regarding the handbook. Suggestions and discussion had included student ID badges, developing a cellphone policy and headphone policy to be enforced, enforce consequences in school regarding tardiness, and prohibiting food from being eaten outside of the cafeteria, limiting elevator use to students who need access. And they also discussed boxer short showing. So all of those items were brought up, and we have been working on that as a school committee, and they were recommended to the superintendent. We also discussed meeting dates for next year, meeting with the Student Advisory Council. And we will be meeting on the third Wednesday of every month at 7:00 AM during the school year. Topics for discussion included setting goals, discussing available conferences for the Student Advisory Council to attend, identifying possible guest speakers, meeting class advisors, coordinating school year meeting and event schedules, and reviewing and recapping new schedule changes. It was an informational meeting, and the students were very informative, and so I just wanted to report on that.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, I met with Mrs. Congdon earlier and we discussed some of the issues brought forth by the student body. First, I want to compliment the school committee for taking a step and meeting with the students and going directly to those students who live in the schools, the rules that the school committee sets, those students have to abide by. So it makes great sense, and I think it says a great deal for the school committee to meet with the students. As we're discussing, I didn't touch the shorts issue, but clearly I want to discuss the cellphones very briefly. And Mrs. Congdon and I were going through that. My recommendation for next year with the administration of the high school, middle high school, is that the students lead this rather difficult topic of should cellphones be allowed? Where will they be allowed? How will they be used? So on. As we all know, the technology is moving faster than schools and school districts' abilities to deal with what the proper policies should be. So I think that one of the recommendations that I made was that meet with the students, have them develop a survey, look at what options are available. And since this is a very important issue for safety for parents and so on, also have meetings with parents and parent groups in the community regarding what appropriate policies in schools should be. Because clearly, one of our primary functions is the safety and welfare of kids. And in today's world, having a cellphone, having access to parents and family members both working is essential. So I think that a great step forward by meeting, having the students generate concerns and issues they have, bringing the parents and the community into this, and then coming up with a policy that's been vetted by all concerned would have the greatest likelihood of success, rather than a few administrators sitting in the room saying, "This is what we should do." I remember vividly a few years ago when my cellphone policy was that when they came into the room, I took the batteries. Can't do that anymore. So we have to come up with plans and procedures that make sense for the kids. And obviously, Mrs. Congdon was amazed when some of the kids talked about test security and everything else with cellphones. So the kids are always going to be about a step and a half ahead of us, as far as this goes. So it's our responsibility to go to them, have them make recommendations, suggestions to administration of the school committee, and then jointly with the parents and the community, come up with a plan that can be implemented and can be effectively utilized at school. So I just want to say that, because it's clearly something that's going to be an issue for the years to come.
Thank you. Any other discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Dunivan.
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney.
Abstain.
Mr. Levo.
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon.
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Four yes and one abstain.
Thank you. Under chair announcements, I have, because Rosa's not here to entertain us, I have some announcements, so bear with me. But first, before I even do that, earlier before the meeting, we were treated to a performance by the high school jazz band. Dr. David Garcia was here with his students, and I'd like to recognize all of them this evening, because they did an outstanding job. I wish that had been the only agenda item this evening. Mr. William Otero Smith, Aaron Berry, Casey Mitchell, Robert Botch, Conrad Wach, Megan Garley, and Jennifer Frichette. Did I miss anybody, Dr. Garcia? Am I okay? Okay, thank you very much. They did an outstanding job. It was a pleasure, and thank you for the hard work that you do with the students. Did you want to say something? Please.
David Garcia, I'm your high school band director and supervisor of music. I am remiss if I didn't announce that tonight is a choir concert. So if you do have a chance to get back up to the high school after the meeting, listen to the last of the choir concert, it's unfortunate that they were on the same night. And I would also be remiss in not mentioning the upcoming Spring Musical, which starts, which opens tomorrow and closes Friday. It's cheap, it's five bucks for adults and three bucks for students, and it's about the 80s. So you're all way too young to remember that era, but some of us do. So please come to the 80s musical, which runs tomorrow night and Friday night at the new high school on Torrey Road.
Thank you so much.
And thank you so much for letting us perform.
Yeah. Do you want to say something? Yes, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Dr. Garcia, I wanted to apologize to you and to the band. Mrs. Quinney and I were at a principal search committee interview, and we missed your performance. So really, truly, I, well, you're equally important, and I just wanted to, you know, personally apologize, because I know you work very hard with the kids, and you're always enthusiastic, and you're right there, and we invited you here, because I know you were very successful at your recent band competition, and you are due a warm congratulations and my sincere apologies for missing your demonstration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while we're on music, I just want to mention that one of our performers this evening, Jennifer Frichette, a senior alto saxophone student from Southbridge High School, performed with the Massachusetts Lions All-State Band in Mansfield as part of the 86th Annual Lions State Convention. So that was an honor for her, that occurred on May 5th. Also, students from the Southbridge Middle and High School Bands were selected to perform in the Central Massachusetts Honors Concert Band. They are students Aaron Berry, Mackenzie McCure, Rebecca Walker, Gwyneth Walmsley from the high school, Lillian Berry, Tyler Gonzalez, Marylex Rodriguez, Aruberto Sintron Santos, Lizzie Gibbo, Marcus Gonzalez, and Robert Hein were chosen from the middle school. This is quite an honor for those students. There will be a concert taking place on Sunday, June 1st, at Shrewsbury High School at 7:00 PM
years, and we thank them for their support of the school district. This is a very busy time of year for our graduating seniors, so I'd like to just let the community know that on June 3rd, senior class night will take place. This is something that traditionally had been done during the school day, but it's my understanding the students requested this be done in the evening to allow family members to attend and celebrate with the seniors. June 4th and 5th, there will be graduation rehearsals during the day. Those rehearsals will take place at McManfield. June 5th, the West Street School Invention Convention for Grade Four will take place. And June 6th, again, is Charlton Street School Career Day. Again, thank you to the members of the community for both coming, for the West Street Career Day and the Charlton Street Career Day for coming into the schools and sharing your experiences with our students. And last but not least, June 6th is the Southbridge High School Graduation Ceremony, which will take place at 6 o'clock at McManfield. In the event of rain, the ceremony will be moved to the Southbridge Middle High School Theater. And finally, on that note, just congratulations to the class of 2014. They are a great group. We are all very proud of them, and best of luck to them in their future endeavors. There's no report of the Student Advisory Committee this evening. The elections for the representative of the Student Advisory Committee will take place in June. A new representative will be selected at that time, and will join us on the dais at our September meeting. And now on to Agenda Item 8, School Committee Reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Curriculum Subcommittee met on Monday, May 19th. Present were myself, member Mrs. Congdon, and Mrs. Quinney. Also present was Mrs. McLaughlin as a parent community member, Mr. Aaron Osborne, our super advisor of instruction, Ms. Colleen Culligan, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Superintendent Nemberco, and community member Brent Abrahamson. Our first order of business was to approve our meeting minutes from our April 14th, 2014 meeting, and those were all approved, all in favor. Our second item of business was to receive an additional update on our draft curriculum proposal for our ELL program for the fall. Mr. Aaron Osborne, again, gave us the information that we were looking for, looking at our numbers. Basically, the bottom line is we need to make sure that we're aware of our gaps, and where our kids are, and where our needs need to be addressed. So this is still a draft proposal. Mr. Osborne has put a great deal of time into getting this together, and it's a work in progress. So we evaluated our situation at Eastford Road, Charlton Street School, and West Street School. Our biggest need right now is looking to service our children at the high school, perhaps relocating some resources and getting some additional teachers. So that is something that is ongoing, and that we will further discuss at our next meeting. From there, we looked at curriculum maps. We hear a lot about curriculum mapping relative to our district. Our curriculum acts for both ELA and math will be taking place over the summer, and we were looking at curriculum acts from other school districts that do it right, to ensure that we're on the right track, and that our maps come out equally as well for our kids. Last but not least, we talked about our new program of studies at the middle high school. It was a program of studies that the school committee approved at our last meeting. However, we had just a couple of questions, and wanted to assure that our students were given the opportunity to choose their AP classes. And then finally, we distributed a 2015 PARCC handout relative to the new PARCC assessments that will be coming onboard for 2015. And with all that being said, our meeting adjourned at 7:51 p.m. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Donovan, do you have a future meeting scheduled?
Not at this time. It's for June, but we're, there's a tentative date, so until it's finalized, I'll be able to announce that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just provide some report on Policy Subcommittee, and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Quinney regarding the Wellness Subcommittee. We, at our last Policy Subcommittee meeting, we worked on predominantly the District Crisis Manual. We're continuing our work on that, and looking at that and what needs to be done, when we turned it over to the superintendent for action. The next policy meeting will take place on Monday, June 2nd, in Room M100 in the Colab Administrative Building. Mrs. Quinney, do you have a report on wellness?
Only that tonight's wellness meeting was rescheduled to next Wednesday, 6:30 on June 4th, at M100 at 25 Colav.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney, do you have anything to report on negotiations?
The Negotiation Subcommittee will continue negotiating with the SEA Unit B on June 4th, which is also next Wednesday, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Congdon, Family and Community Engagement?
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And any report of the SPED PAC liaison?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This weekend, the SPED PAC led by Ms. Leeann Pate had its first annual spring fling, in which they had bounce houses outside, they had sensory tables both inside and outside, there were water tables, there was shaving cream tables that kids could interact and play with, they had food for sale, the Fraternal Order of Eagles Women's Auxiliary had a bake sale as well. And this was, as I said, the first time this event has taken place, and it was an extraordinary success. I think all children that attended had a wonderful time. It gave children that aren't necessarily able to partake in activities that are held for kids that are in regular ed. The kids that came had some sensory processing issues, and had activities that were geared towards them in some quiet spaces, and then some open spaces where they could interact and really have a great time interacting with their peers. I think it was very well attended for the first time, and being over a holiday weekend. And as I said, the SPED PAC would like to thank Ms. Pate, the Fraternal Order of Eagles Women's Auxiliary, Ms. Colleen Culligan, the school committee, and Priscilla Holtz, who also helped volunteer. And thank you also to the janitor at Colav that day, Derek, who provided a lot of heavy lifting assistance. So thank you to the SPED PAC and Ms. Pate, and for everyone that attended. We hope that this is an annual event that will be bigger and even better attended next year. The next SPED PAC meeting will be held on June 19th. From 6:00 to about 6:30 will be the meeting itself, and elections will be held. If anyone has any interest in sitting on the board for that, please attend and get more information. And following that brief meeting will be sensory processing presented by Anita Poole. And I believe that that is all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I just want to comment that I did hear that that event went very well, and for everybody who took the initiative to put that first-of-its-kind event together, job well done. This evening, we have a couple of presentations. First, we have a presentation on the district-wide summer school programming, so we'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Aaron Osborne, the supervisor of instruction, and Ms. Colleen Culligan, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services. Welcome.
Do you have the handout?
Yes.
Okay. So I believe our plan is more or less to do a question and answer.
Okay.
I can summarize the programs quickly for viewing audience.
Could you just speak into the mic, I know?
Oh, okay. We could summarize them for the viewing audience?
Yes, please.
Okay. So there's two major categories, or really three categories. There's the, Colleen will talk in a minute about the SPED programs that fall under her category. I will talk about some of the more traditional programs, as well as the ELL program. To begin with, we'll start with summer school for credit. This is a credit recovery program for students who may have failed classes in the high school. They'll have an opportunity to make those up for credit. That program will run July 7th through August 7th, a five-week program. It's slated to run from 8:45 to 12:45, 8:45 in the morning to 12:45 in the afternoon. There'll be two blocks of classes within that session. Lunch will be provided, and transportation will be provided for that program. That program will cost students $150, with the exception of the French Ones course. Students who are enrolled in French One during this semester will have the opportunity to take that for free if they wish. We also have a summer academic support program, predominantly aimed at middle school students who have been struggling with the MCAS traditionally. That will also run July 7th through July 24th. I'm sorry, it's going to run a little shorter. It's three weeks versus five weeks. Same hours, 8:45 to 12:45. There will be an ELA component, as well as a math component. Lunch will be provided, and transportation will be provided. That program will be free of charge. That's funded under a 625 grant. We also have a middle school ELL support program that will also run from 8:45 to 12:45. That's going to be a free program, grant funded under our Title III and Title I grants. Lunch will be provided as well. Transportation will be provided. We'll have a summer enrichment program. This is aimed at students entering grades one to six, who attend Southbridge Public Schools, who we feel could use some additional assistance during the summer, and they will be designated by their respective schools, so West Street or Charlton Street. And they'll be given invites. That will run from 8:30 to 12:30. The differential in times is just the differential in the bus drop-offs, so the transportation will be provided. Lunch will be provided, and the goal is for it to be based on principal and teacher recommendations, 12 to 15 students per grade, give or take. Finally, we're going to have an elementary school-level English language support class. Same hours, 8:30 to 12:30, July 7th to August 7th, five weeks again. That program, again, is absolutely free, funded by a combination of Title III and Title I monies. Lunch and transportation will be provided. And for the ELL program, invites will go out to students within the ELL program, who teachers feel will most benefit from. Okay?
Yep.
And I'll leave you in.
So, good evening. The special education programs are the same as we had last year with the addition of the ESP classroom, which is our behavior classroom. We did make some changes this year in the venue. We're giving West Street School the summer program this year, so that there can be some equity between the two schools. Last year, it was at Charlton Street. We are providing programs for middle and high school inclusion, and our students with the, on the autism spectrum, which are part of the PAS classroom, as well as our life skills students. Students who qualify for the special education programs in the summer through their IEP, it is demonstrated, this year we've done something a little bit different. We've started to collect data to establish substantial regression, which is the IDEA principle behind qualification for summer school. And that has been very helpful for us this year, because we've had a 23% decrease in the number of students that are qualifying under IEPs to go to summer school, which should result in a cost savings, but it's more importantly, less about the cost, more about the fact that the team chair people have been trained now to begin to keep data after school vacation weeks, after time off in the school, to determine and establish that substantial regression would occur for a student, and that is what qualifies them through their IEP to participate in summer school. So that's the first time that we've, that that has been done. And so we have a really good, what I think, a credible picture. Students going to summer school are students who require it. It's needed, and it will also help to prevent their regression in the summer, and make them more capable and ready to start school in the fall. So we do have the elementary inclusion class. We had that last year. We aligned our dates this year with the nutrition program, so that we're providing the free lunch. All of this is funded through Special Education Transportation, Special Education 240 grant. Transportation is a part of it. And right now, we're setting up the staffing and the classrooms to be prepared for the summer program. We do have a summer coordinator. It's Ms. Ruth Ann Carney, who is also one of our team chair people, and has done this for the last couple of years. So I don't know if you have any specific questions about the special education programs? Be happy to answer any of those, yes. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Culligan. I just had a question regarding the move of the special ed program to West Street for the summer. I understand the equity between having it at Charlton Street last summer, and then at West Street this summer. However, my question is, given that there's a setup at Charlton Street School, a PAS classroom already there, how are you going to, are you going to set up a new PAS classroom at West Street and move all of that equipment? How is that going to work out?
Well, the students that we have participating in the PAS classroom, we're going to be looking at the staffing. We have, we have center-based instruction there now, and we introduced curriculum this year. So we have a lot less equipment that is associated with that with respect to a lot of the discrete trial cubbies and that kind of thing. What we're going to do is look at West Street, and pick out classrooms that will best suit the, you know, the facility needs, but we don't think it's going to be a big problem whatsoever, and we've already talked to maintenance staff and that kind of thing. So we have cubbies that we can easily place over there for the discrete trials, and other than that, the other PAS classroom for the younger children will remain at Eastford Road. That's actually more, there's more equipment associated with that classroom. So because of the center-based instruction and the type of curriculum we've introduced, we've reduced a lot of the discrete trial training that was going on in the past. We feel that we can adequately outfit it fairly easily at West Street School.
And then I just had another question regarding special ed transportation.
Yes.
How many students are you anticipating at these programs?
Well, this year, the qualifying number of students is, I think it's around 84. So typically, we have had most of those, last year, again, this is only my second year doing it, we had 98% attendance. So we work with the transportation company to, you know, double, make sure all the transportation is available. Obviously, we might need some wheelchair transportation and all that. So I'm going to have some figures this year to compare against last year. As I said, there was a 23% decrease in students that qualified for it, which should help reduce some of the staffing costs, as well as transportation. So depends on what routes we can combine. I only have last year to compare it to. So it'll be interesting to see what changes.
Thank you. And then with those students who are in wheelchairs, are those students currently at Charlton Street or at West Street, and are we looking at modifying classrooms to just fit their needs? Or would most of them be at Eastford Road?
Well, I haven't gone over the student list with the summer school coordinator and looked at all of the classrooms yet, so I anticipate to do that quickly, within the next week. We just actually had the staff posted, and are going to be looking at the staff that we need, and the number of students who respond to the registration. So we'll certainly take care of them. The buildings are handicapped accessible, and we would have to make sure, and we have students in wheelchairs at West Street School as well. So we'd have to make sure that we're, the location of the classroom, the accessibility, the size, and the facility itself. So the, once we, this first time, I've actually had it at West Street since I've been here. I don't know if it has been there in the past, but we plan to walk through those classrooms once we know the students that we have. I'm going to do that with the summer school coordinator next week.
Excellent.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you. Was there anybody else with questions? Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Just have a quick question. Thank you, Ms. Culligan. Through you, Madam Chair. Relative to staffing, do we use our own existing teachers, or do you?
Yes.
Do we hire new ones for summer?
No. We get a pretty good turnout for teachers requesting to participate in summer school. This year, Mr. Osborne and I looked at the pool of teachers that applied. The postings were put together, and we looked at the classrooms and the staffing, and we've sort of divided according to strengths. We also have paras and tutors in particular that have to support students on IEPs. In my particular programming, we have a lot more para and tutor support that is required, because students have them on their IEPs.
Right.
So all of the staff that we have are our own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And just one other question, is there a deadline for students to apply, for lack of a better term, or be identified?
Well, we're a little bit late this year, about a week or two behind. So what we do is we just say by June 15th probably is going to be the date that we're going to ask registration materials to be returned. We send those out with the students, we put multiple copies around the schools. We always expect that we're going to have some latecomers. And hopefully, when I have a little bit of longitudinal data over the next couple of years, as I said, we have 98% attendance. And if that continues to be the case, then we typically staff anticipating that that's what we're going to have.
Okay.
And we have a very good response rate and we rarely have to chase students for the summer school programs.
Well, thank you very much for the time you're putting into this. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, maybe both of you could answer this question. I know you mentioned the letters. Have they already been sent out to all the students and families who qualify for the programs?
No, they should be going out early next year.
And then just one other question in regards to transportation. Who will be riding the buses? Are we going to separate between like grades one through five and six through 12 or for the transportation?
I don't believe that's been done in the past. I'm going to talk to the bus company about the best way to do that. And we're going with more or less what happened last year and it seems like that's what was done. I'm going to see what they can do about making sure there is a separation at least on buses of age groups.
And will the cost of the grant cover all transportation for all the programs?
The grants are covering, I believe your transportation is all grant covered, so is mine.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, this may be a question more for the superintendent than for you, but the price for the credit recovery program is $150 for Southbridge students. What if there is a hardship for our families? Is there a provision for that or?
Well, I guess this is a bit of a philosophical opinion on my side, is that they've had a chance to pass the course for free during the school year. And one of the reasons why, we had lengthy conversations last year when we reorganized the entire summer school, this year we have consistency and so on, and we put a minimum of 50. And my experience, not necessarily here, is that some students are professional summer school students. They sit during the school year, do very little, fail, and they come for five weeks and magically pass. And so we're trying to limit that. Students who have made an effort and for whatever reason didn't succeed, this is an opportunity for credit recovery. If there is a situation where a student has a need, we will review it and adjust it. But I don't want to set up a program where kids automatically think there's a scholarship and they can do very little and so on. They disrupted the classroom during the regular year, we don't want them coming and disrupting the summer school program either. So that's, that's been my experience in the years past. And when I got here, I also wanted to make sure that the students who are out of district paid a little bit more. In the past, it paid the same. So we were subsidizing students from outside of districts. So if you want to come, take a course, it's convenient for you, it's going to cost you $200 a course, we can at least cover our costs. We want to make sure that the credit recovery, which is not funded by extensive grants or so on, we're doing that. The transportation, we worked very hard last year, we'll do the same this year, is to use grant money and there are empty seats on the bus because Torrey Road is hard to get to. So we're going to try to ensure that each, and every student who wants to get to the school will provide some sort of transportation for them. And as far as differentiating between elementary and the older kids, again, I have a slightly different view than many people, is they go to the mall together, they live at home together, why can't they ride the bus together for five weeks? It's all part of, I ran a K-12 school in Tennessee for a number of years, and I answered that question. And what I found was when you mix the older kids with the very young ones, the older kids behave better. And if you, the worst behaved students I've seen is when you take one or two years, 13 and 14-year-olds, stick a ball together in a building with a thousand of them, then you have, you're asking for issues. So I think part of the pro-social aspect of what we're trying to do is learn how to get along, work with, ride with kids of all different ages and so on, so. But if there is a problem, we'll address it very quickly, you know, obviously, but it's more parents than kids. I always joked about the fact that when you go to a mall, there isn't a separate door for middle school kids, elementary school kids, and high school kids. You all come in, interact, and then it seems to work out fine. But somehow or other, in schools, we get this idea, we need to have rigid age separations rather than working and teaching them how to get along together. I tell you, I was astounded when I went first to the K-12, is that the 17 and 18-year-olds would say to each other, "Slow down, there's little kids here." In the high school, they'd be flying through the halls. So again, a philosophy.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I had a quick question for Mr. Osborne relative to transportation. Once the students are identified of who will be attending, will there be drop-off areas of town for the bus routes or will they be the similar bus routes that they, that, you know, take place during the regular school year?
Excuse me. As part of the packet they receive, as part of the program, they will receive a bus stop list. Last year and in previous years, AA Transportation set up a series of stops throughout town. You know, I think Brookside is one of them, the library is another. There'll be a series of drop-off points. We should be running two buses, and I believe each ran 15 to 20 stops each throughout town. So there will be quite a few.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It'll be, it'll be based on need and it will establish convenient stops and we're not going to do door to door.
No, I knew that.
We're not doing that.
Mr. Levo?
Through you, Madam Chair. I have some questions for you, Mr. Osborne. I see that like in the summer academic program, the middle school English language program, those are going to be, the eligibility of those students is by their grades or by a teacher. In the summer school for credit, what's the deadline for registration for a course in that program?
Right up to the end.
Yeah.
Right up to July 7th.
Yeah.
When the grades are done, so the kids see what other options, and sometimes they'll come on the last day and say, "Can we register?" Bring your money.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Osborne. Some of the courses for, over the summer have either minimum numbers or maximum classroom numbers. What about the other, the summer academic non-credit, the ELL programs? Do you have targets per grade or a number in mind for how many kids you're expecting?
I'm expecting anywhere from 20 to 30 in the ELL classrooms. We have, for the middle school, for example, we have, I believe, a full-time teacher and two paras, a para and two tutors slotted, I believe, for that. For the elementary program, I believe we have two teachers and two paras slotted for that right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate the information. And next, we have a program on the Ombudsman Program. This is an alternative education services proposal. We'd like to welcome Mr. Chris Hamel, Vice President of Business Development. Before, I don't know if you need a moment to set up?
Yes, ma'am.
If you're all set? Okay. I think we have a program up there, I don't know if that's different. And I don't know if buzz.
Yeah, Mr. Hamel is Vice President for Program Development for the Ombudsman Corporation. And I think I've said this a few times before, I've contacted them, we're looking at developing a disruptive students program at Cole Avenue and with an initial number of about 25 students. And state regulations effective July 1, 2014, no school district can expel a student out of the district without providing a program for them. We're trying to stay ahead of the curve in this respect, nor do I believe in expelling students out to the street or suspending them out to the street, which would do too much here. So those disruptive students will have a place to go, we hope, once this program, if the school committee reviews and approves. And rather than disrupting a classroom in an academic setting at a middle, high school, this would be an alternative. An alternative is exactly what we're talking about. And Ombudsman has provided a service, and Mr. Hamel will go over this nationally. They're recognized as a vendor in Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so we don't have to go to any special requests through the Department of Education to grant a license for this. I think that was the holdup last year before I came, that Cole Avenue was supposed to have been an alternative school, and they forgot to go after the license, so that wasn't approved and so on, so it wasn't set up. This way here, by working with a established, proven company, we can provide a very cost-effective service for our students. Currently, if we send a student out of district, our costs are in the high 30s, low 40s. This program will be providing a similar service, not an identical service, for less than $10,000 per student. So, Mr. Hamel, floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Emmeral, members of the committee. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening and share with you a little bit about Ombudsman as a company, our philosophies, our protocols and practices, how we develop and launch a program, and what the program's going to look like here in Southbridge if we choose to move forward. To that, and I do have some folders, these materials parallel. They're supposed to be on the screen.
We have.
This is a.
It's a fancy folder.
Ombudsman has been in business for over 38 years. We service a little over 20,000 students in 23 states around the country. We specialize with students who are disengaged for a wide array of reasons, whether it's life events, incidents in school, it runs the gamut. The young lady you see here on our, on our screen is one of our graduates from our program in Arizona. She was a young mom. Life happened with the arrival of a new addition to her family, quite unplanned, and she needed a different path to graduate from high school. And subsequently, she went on to college, so we're really proud of her and our other success stories. This presentation is going to be broken up into three parts, our experience, our planning and delivery of service, and student achievement. I'm going to be speaking not only about the company as a whole, but I'm also going to be diving into what's it going to look like here in Southbridge as well. Our experience, as I mentioned, we've been around for 38 years. Ombudsman is based out of Libertyville, Chicago, or Libertyville, just north of Chicago. But as I said, we are a national company. We marry our mission, vision, and mission to that of our partner districts. We want to be a part of your district, not just an addition hanging out there on the side. We come in and we work with the district hand in hand. Our vision is we believe all students can learn, they all have value. Some may just have a different path in getting to that diploma than what we would normally see as a traditional program. Re-engaging the disengaged, that's really what we're all about. Whether we're working with students who have strong gang affiliations in South Side, Chicago, or whether we're working with students from a wide variety of different backgrounds, whether it be new students in the United States, students who are overaged, under credit, students who are maybe adjudicated youths in the criminal justice system, we work with all of them and we re-engage them. It's about creating those long-lasting relationships. A lot of times, students come to school not to learn, but because they know that someone's there to support them, to cheer them on, to help them take that next step, to risk academically. Oftentimes, our students become disengaged because they haven't been successful. We want to find the smallest success and build on it and hopefully build that momentum, get them excited about learning again. If you've ever had a cup of Starbucks, you know, no cup is the same. None of our students are the same. They learn differently. So that's the, kind of the motivation behind this slide. 87,000 variations on what motivates students, the way we need to deliver instruction. It's really, we pride ourselves on being an individualized program. When we do that intake with that student, it's not just with the students, it's with the parents, it's with the school administration, there's a team around that student. And the one thing that that student sees that all of those adults at that table have in common is, that student's success. We're building that support, we're building that relationship piece right there with them. That is absolutely critical. And again, this is the end goal, that, that success of graduating. And we do focus on a personalized platform. When we do transitional meetings, you'll hear me talk a lot about transitions into and out of the program. Right now, what we're seeing in our 7th through 12, our sixth grade through 12th grade programs is the average stays about 77 days. They're coming into our programs for a brief period of time, maybe it's through a referral from the school for behavior, maybe it's court ordered, you know, maybe there was a life event that caused them to not be able to attend a traditional school setting. So that intake is important, so that that baton is passed successfully. We look at it, we do a transcript analysis, we do baseline data gathering for where the student is academically and to identify any areas of need for remediation. So we build that comprehensive plan, we build it with the student, we build it with the parent, and we build it with the district. Conversely, on the backside, that transition back into a traditional setting, there's a handoff piece between the Ombudsman Program and the traditional school setting. Typically, we try to align it with a semester break. We don't want to make it where you're coming in mid-year because we're following the state curriculum, we're following the protocols and practices in the student handbook of the district as well. So we want, those are the natural breaks really that we see for that handoff. And we use our staff to also work with the school counselor or the school social worker just to make sure that that transitions back, especially if we're dealing with students with behavior issues. We want them to find that success back in that traditional setting. There's a lot of anxiety that comes into these young ladies and gentlemen as they transition back. Oh, gosh, I wasn't successful here the last time, am I going to be this time? And we still want to keep that support network around them to make sure that they are successful. As I had, this is just an overview of us. This slide is actually a little dated. We're in 23 states and we have, we are in 115 districts and we have 130 programs around the country. We're one of the few nationally accredited companies in the, in the country in this space. We are actually able to offer our own diploma, if that was something that the district partners wanted us to provide. So we really make sure we provide a good, rigorous, and relevant curriculum to our students as measured by the requirements for advanced ed and the other accreditation bodies. This is just an overview of some of our different partnerships. The other piece to us is we actively seek out partnerships within the community, whether it's through the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, the Rotary. We've even worked with different unions, the program out in Las Vegas with the Culinary Unions. They actually have a school called Culinary High. And this is for, again, students who are overage, under credit, kind of the kids we're talking about here in Southbridge. But one of the key parts was a career readiness piece through the Culinary Union. That's really not just cooks and chefs, it's all the backhouse pieces, not the gaming that we would see in Las Vegas, but, so it's a pretty large group and the kids were able to be exposed to a lot of different career paths as they moved out of our program and/or a traditional high school. We want to look at that post-graduation piece. What are they going to do? Is it a trade school? Is it college? Is it the military? Is it the workforce? We want to help those students think beyond just coming in through this week. Planning and delivery of service. We plan this together. We look at every aspect of the student, not just the academics. We look at those pro-social skills. We use a PBIS model that I'm going to dive into a little bit deeper later on, but we, again, looking at that student in totality. This is kind of what our staffing model looks like, and actually, this is what the staffing model will look like here in Southbridge, because we're looking at 25 students, or 25 slots. So that's basically, if you think of it as a seat, we may have a student in there in the first semester, they're going to rotate out, we're going to put another one in there. What this allows us to do is, in each four-hour session, those students will have, will have anywhere from 12 to 13 students in there. So that's a six to one student teacher ratio. Again, it's about building those relationships pieces, building the supports, helping those students understand how to take risks in an academic sense. You know, gosh, I don't think I know the answer, but I'm going to put my hand up and try anyway. Plus, when we look at our instructional delivery model, this allows for some really solid one-on-one instruction, especially in some of the challenging areas where some of the students frustration levels are pretty high. We want to get those frustration levels down so they can just focus, conquer the skill, you know, and build that confidence up. Our professional development process is very rigorous. We follow, again, we have a We follow, again, we have a whole department in Libertyville that looks at our curricula, the way we deliver instruction, how we're facilitating, how can we leverage technology to really engage the students. We really are working with digital citizens, with this younger generation, and so we really want to make sure we leverage that. Our delivery, there is some web-based curricula, there's a lot of small group, one-on-one. So, all those different modalities of instructional delivery, we work with our staff to make sure they're fully skilled, fully trained, to deliver their best every day with these kids. In our alignment, we have, on the operational side of our company, we have, beyond the center director, we have area managers, and we have regional vice presidents, and then we have the actual senior vice president or department head. So, from a corporate standpoint, we're also pushing trainers into our centers to go over the latest pedagogies and reinforce good instructional habits. Our area managers and our regional vice presidents are coming in, making visits, doing the evaluations, working with district staff to problem solve. If there's a staff member in a center that's not a good fit, we want to know about it. Again, it's a partnership. So, as we do those evaluations, we seek input from our colleagues on the district side of the aisle, what's working, what's not working, what do we need to address, what needs to be put into a professional development plan, you know. So, those are all the pieces that we look at. We talk about culture and climate skills, knowledge and understanding. Again, we're looking for high student growth and achievement rates, strong academics and good behavior, as well as execution and implementation with fidelity. As a company, we're looking at, you know, several hundred centers around the country. We did a lot of digging last year as a company onto what's working, what's not working. We want to make sure our rigor and relevance is the absolute best we can deliver each day. So, we really hold our own staff accountable to very high standards. Our curriculum is aligned with state standards, Common Core, so it's, again, we really pride ourselves on delivering the best level of instruction as possible. As I mentioned about the Common Core alignment, we use a wide array of instructional strategies. We know of those 25 students, they're going to have 25 different starting points, they're going to have 25 different strengths in their academic toolkit and 25 different weaknesses. And we need to be able to, as educators, address those, build those deficits into skills, and take those skills and make them that much stronger. We do a lot of teacher-led instruction. It's not just sitting in front of a monitor and clicking through answers. It's creating that relationship, supporting that academic risk-taking. That's what you would see if you walked into any one of our centers. Blend and learning model, this is what's really kind of unique about education, because we're able to leverage technology, not just from our side, but in the educational community as a whole, whether we're looking at web-based textbooks, web-based curricula. The traditional school day, the traditional school year really is being phased out because learning can happen at any time. I mean, kids are delivering, we're delivering instruction on smartphones. So, I mean, it's really a lot different from the days of a textbook and a chalkboard. The pacing is also key. We want these students to be at a pace where they can really glom onto it, digest it, own it, and ideally teach it back. That's when we really know they've owned it. And again, we talk about a lot of teacher-led instruction. We deliver a majority of our instruction through teacher-led, whether it's one-on-one, we may have the lesson up on the computer, but we're working with manipulatives or working on sentence structure, whatever it may be. This is a good example of some of the different types of learning environments you might see in a center. The flex model really, where you're going to see maybe a larger group of students working at computers, the teachers moving about, helping direct one-on-one. You'll see some of the small group work, this might be a book study, this may be some peer editing, and then the rotational model. We use both of these in our center settings, because again, one of the things that we've found in brain-based learning is certain breaks, getting up, moving, resetting. A lot of times, if we're working on a project at work, just getting up, grabbing a cup of coffee allows us to kind of reset and refocus. Same thing for the kids in the classroom. Our instructional process, we talked about, I talked about transitions earlier on. When they come in, we're analyzing and we're assessing, we're doing diagnostics, both informative and assumative. We're prescribing an academic plan for these kids based on where they are with their transcripts, what their deficits are, and are moving forward. We're implementing, and then we're also progress monitoring. We do quarterly assessments to see where those students are, and then we adjust our instructional practice, plan accordingly. Our curriculum is all research-based, it's all based on the national standards and Common Core. And again, our goal here is not just academic intervention and helping with developing good, solid pro-social skills, it's also helping prepare them for career and college readiness. That is a very large part of our programming. Talked a little bit about PBIS, this is a good example of how we slice it apart and Obviously, we have interventions for the whole group. If we need to ratchet it up a little bit for that 15%, we do so, and if there's that, you know, small minority portion, we even take it the next step further. It may be more frequent reinforcements, it may be, you know, whatever we need to do to get that student re-engaged and supported. A lot of times, people ask us, well, you exclude students. The only time we remove students from a program is if they have really violated the student code of conduct. We follow all district policies and protocol, so those students are coming in to the same set of rules and expectations that they had in a regular ed setting, in their high school and middle school, just in a much smaller setting, and we're helping work on those skills and deficits that need to be improved in that social arena, if you will. And just some examples of the community partners that we work with in other communities. Coming into Southbridge, we will actively seek out Southbridge-specific community partners and engage with the community. We also do a lot of recruitment. To date, we've reclaimed 1,600 dropouts for Chicago Public Schools. These were kids that were completely disengaged, they were out of the system, we went out into the, into the different precincts and actively recruited them. This is something we can do in Southbridge, and especially in light of some of the recent changes in legislation that require districts to provide education for expelled students, there's going to be a niche for this. And, you know, we're not, we are no strangers to print media, I mean, social media. We have a pretty aggressive marketing department that we can bring into play if that's something that a district partner desires, to help reach out and reclaim some of those kids that may have not completed or just dropped out for whatever reason. It really does take a village to raise a child, and we believe in engaging the family. That's why we ask that a family member attends the intake. We want that parental support, we want that reinforcement. We also want the parents or family members to really know what's happening here, you know, what is your student going to go through? So, that way, they can support, they understand. When their student comes home and is talking about their day, they have an idea of what's going on. And we also reach out to the families. We want them engaged. And for the students, if they're not showing up, or they're late, they're going to get a call, they may get a visit. We want them here, we want them to know, we want to see them at our program. Eighty-three percent, this is an interesting number. We did a survey of students who had graduated from Embusman, and 83% felt Embusman prepared them for college and career. So, that was some really, some good feedback for us. And again, it was just a little bit more of a deeper dive in that slide. Talking about student achievement, what you see here in front of you, this pie chart, these are our own internal metrics. This is what we're looking at from a corporate level into our individual centers. We're looking at, and this is quite honestly how we weight this when we evaluate centers and staff within those centers. Biggest piece of that pie is student growth. Are students growing? We talk about an annual stabilization rate. That is, how are we slowing or stemming the tide of dropouts, students who are not engaged? In a district where we're looking at a behavior referral, such as this program, what is the referral rate? Is that starting to taper off? Is it stabilizing? That's a big piece for us. We also look at, you know, graduation rate, star participation, that's our baseline assessment that we use to measure students upon arrival, and we also use that for progress monitoring. What is the growth? That's one of the pieces, along with credits obtained. Here are just some interesting stats from us, and the one thing you need to understand, this is over about 14,000 students, but actually 13,692. In 77 days, a little over half a grade level in growth is what we're seeing. Out of that group, 71% graduation rate, 87% of our parents reported they were proud of their student's accomplishment. 73% when we look at credits earned, this was the credit goals, we look at, okay, you're here, here are your benchmarks, so how many, what was the percentage of those students hitting their benchmarks? This is the number I really like. Eighty percent of the students say they feel successful. Now, remember, these are the kids that, they weren't in school, they left because they were unsuccessful. They were, so to hear 80%, yeah, I'm successful, that's why we're in this game, that's what it's all about. And then 77% of the students report that their attitude about school has improved by being in Embusman. It's about helping them find that success. That's huge. And then, 1.5% withdraw due to behavior. So, out of that 13,000-plus, we had 212 that left, or we had worked with the district on, is this really the best placement? And quite honestly, a lot of times, they may have left our program, but they may have gone into a more intensive program, depending on how that was set up in the district, so. We provide annual reports, but we can also, because we're collecting so much data, if the district wants us to measure specific benchmarks or specific content areas, we can generate those reports on a semi-annual or quarterly basis, depending on what the partner wants. Every state has annual reporting requirements, so we want to make sure we're providing our district partners with the data that they need for those reporting requirements, or if they're just monitoring a particular cohort. So, we're looking to be your partners, we're looking to help the students in Southbridge. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Leavell.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, it was a great presentation. This is something that I do believe this community needs. I do have some questions. You made mention that this would be a pace-yourself kind of program, that, might understand, they'd be working at their own pace, and if that's the case, will they be graduating earlier if the credit is achieved?
Will they be graduating earlier?
Right, okay, so what I'm trying to ask is, okay, you take a freshman who gets, comes into your program who's having behavioral issues or whatnot, and, not for nothing, but is a very smart kid, and is able to progress through the program at his pace, which is probably an accelerated pace, and maybe he's just bored in the classroom. He finishes the program in three years, two years. At that point, do they have their own graduation? Do you wait to have a combined graduation?
Very good questions. We've done both, we've had our own graduations, and we've done them with the district. That has all worked out with our district partner, especially when we look at early graduation. If they're attaining credits, perhaps the Embusman while that environment is good for them, maybe a similar environment can be created back in the traditional high school setting, because there's a large portion that, right now, that's on the table for this program, is around behavioral skills. If they're, the behavioral skills are off, or issues are off the table, and they're able to progress within the district, then that would be a conversation to be held with district administrators on what is the best plan for this young lady or gentleman. Coming back to your issue on graduation, again, looking to the district for direction and guidance on, do we want to have a separate graduation, or do we want to have them included into a traditional commencement ceremony at the high school? So, those would be all logistical pieces we would work out with the district upon opening the doors.
You said that you have your own diploma.
Yes, sir.
This is a high school diploma?
It is a originally accredited high school diploma.
And with that diploma, do they also receive a Southbridge high school diploma as well?
When we look at the Embusman, that is an option that the district can select for us to issue a diploma. Majority of the districts do issue their own diplomas. Sometimes, situations will arise where the district may opt for the Embusman diploma. Again, it's really, when we look at that program design, it's, we look to the district for direction.
Let me address that.
Yes, sir.
To be real clear, right now, what we're looking at is a disruptive students program.
Yes, sir.
And when we set up suspending students out to the street, we suspend them to this program, and they stay there for a period of time when they're ready to go back. Now, one of the things that this area needs is an alternative school, clearly an alternative high school, where students who, for whatever reason, can't be successful in a traditional high school could go someplace for three or four years and studying and graduate. And when I was Superintendent in Brockton, we had three alternative programs, and that was one of the things. So, I think our goal is to set up a disruptive students program in the first year, and one of the things that I think it's really important for us is to learn from the successes they've had around the country. Right now, too often in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because we have Harvard and MIT, we think we know everything. There are lots of places that have developed very successful programs for dropouts, for alternative schools, for disruptive students, and they're all different.
Yes, sir.
So, I think that's important. One of the things clearly this community needs to be investigating, and I wrote this down, is some way of outreach and bringing back students who are 17, 18, 19 years old who dropped out of school and with no future without a high school diploma. So, that's something that may be discussed, and a couple of communities can come together and develop an outreach program to bring students back. This might be something that the community college could do, and work very successfully with overage students who have, don't have diplomas and so on, and they can develop accelerated programs for them. So, I think, step one, here's a program that is cost-effective, has had success nationally to come in and start small, and if necessary, build and so on, so. But I think your questions, Mr. Leavell, are right on, okay?
Thank you.
That a very bright kid who just doesn't get along with other kids on his own pace, you know, why hold him back? This is why I think, you know, right now, we work with seat time, how many hours you can sit in your seat, you know?
Couple more questions, Madam Chair. So, we're discussing at the initial launch of this program, it being geared towards those disruptive students. How will you handle those behavior issues? What kind of training will go into the staff?
Excellent question. These behavior issues, this is one of our bread and butter areas as a company. We do a lot of training with our staff on social skills development, conflict resolution, really, quite honestly, just basic people skills is what a lot of it boils down to, and also working with these students and showing them really mutual respect. If you, as an instructor, if you give that respect, it will be returned to you, but you need to come in giving first, and the students need to see that the level of expectation is there. There is really zero tolerance for the behaviors that brought them here, so we look to find ways to help them manage them, whether it's some coping skills, whether it's de-escalation strategies. There's a whole myriad of behavior interventions that we bring into play, and that's part of our ongoing professional development as a company. Every year, we sit down and we do lots of internal surveys of where the professional development needs. Is it in the area of behavioral management? Is it in the area of PBIS? So, we look at those and we tailor and target our professional development to make sure our instructors have those strong skill sets. Also to that end, if there's an opportunity for us to work with the district on, you know, sharing some professional development initiatives, we certainly want to be involved in that so that we're all moving together in the same direction.
Okay. Now, in the initial interview, the initial interview of the student, will that take place with a principal, a guidance council? take place with a principal, a guidance counselor, and will you come up with an education plan? This is what is expected of you. And how many hours a day is this program? Is it as a regular school day?
The program is, is a four-hour compressed day.
Okay.
On that initial intake, we'll work with the district to identify, who are the key players on those transitional meetings, both coming in and going out? From our side of the aisle, the center director will be there, and if the instructor is available, we will have them in there as well. But the other players will be the ones that are identified by the district. So it may be an assistant principal, it may be a social worker, whomever they decide is, who will be point there. But the goal is to identify, not only what academic pieces are we working on, but also what are the behavioral pieces we need to work on.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
I am actually, I have a lot of questions, and I apologize.
No, no.
Just because I think that this is a great idea. I think that this program, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for a, an alternative school. And with that, I, I do have a wealth of knowledge just according to, or because of that. Do you bring your own staff, or do you post these jobs here? And are they, I mean, are they advertised here locally?
Can be yes to both. We do advertise locally, we recruit nationally. When we do our hiring, we will ask for district input. These are our employees, but we want to make sure they're a good fit in that team with the district. So we work together on that piece. But we, if we can hire local, qualified and certified people, by all means, absolutely, that would be the ideal.
Now, one more, sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Work co-op. Is there some kind of program set up to where the work, it's like a program that was set up in our school? So we could do the four hours of school, plus we would be able to work four hours and get credit for the hours that we worked in a job locally?
It sounds more like that, that kind of traditional alternative school. At this point, we're looking really at behavior intervention pieces, so we're looking at that short-term turnaround, so kind of that 70 to 80-day mark, maybe longer, depending on the student. But really, the focus will be behavioral and, and helping with those social development skills. I do know Superintendent Emberco has identified some additional resources to round out that day, and so we'll be, we're coordinating with the district to make sure those transitions happen.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Hamel. Thank you for coming and for rearranging to be here with us tonight.
Not a problem. Thank you for having me.
You had said that, that like that 77-day is kind of the key. My question is, at those natural breaks at vacation times, kids aren't necessarily going to be getting expelled or suspended at such times. How do you deal with that transition at inopportune times?
Quite honestly, we work with the district to make it work. That 77-day really is a, a statistical average of what we were seeing.
Yep.
From a calendaring standpoint, we follow the district calendar. We don't have a different calendar other than our two sessions. But if we have a student, and they may get expelled midsemester, okay.
Right.
Not a problem. That's, when we do a behavioral program such as this, those transitions can really happen, the intake can happen at any time. The transition back into a traditional setting, that's when we really like to look at those semester breaks, because we really just want that student to step off on the right foot so they're successful going back in. Intakes, we know it may be third week of school. It may be the last three weeks of school that we get one coming in. Not a problem. We, we make it work.
Right. And then my other question is, with these 25 slots?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, certain times of the year tend to lead to more inopportune behaviors, so to speak. How do you deal with influxes of referrals at certain times?
I, I think one of the benefits of this program, when you look at the triangle PBIS, right? And if you look at the first 80%, it's the classroom teacher. We haven't focused enough on that particular aspect of it, is, is many of our teachers need to have more training, more professional development in behavior, so on. And we've been working at the middle high school, and I've been looking at the data and so on. It's that children are being sent out of the room for very little things like not bringing a pencil, or not doing their homework, and being sent to the assistant principal's office rather than being handled in the classroom first, and then next level, so on. So I think that's going to, this program, with their professional development, with our focus on, on behaviors and so on, which we started this year, will be able to build on for next year. So I think that we're going to be very careful about who goes in there and how long kids stay. It's not going to be out of my room to the alternative program.
Right.
So it's going to, the kids that go there are students who aren't successful in their classroom, are disrupting the learning of 25 other kids. That's unacceptable.
Absolutely.
Okay? And, and then, because we'll have steps before you get there. It won't be, you're wearing a hat in my classroom and out of there, so, so. So we're going to work very carefully with the special ed department and, and school administration, assistant principals, and, and so on, to ensure that, that we do this appropriately. And the other thing that I've been working with is, with some community programs, that will be able to also provide additional tutoring services, so on, at no cost to us on-site. So I've been talking with, with Mr. Escobar.
Carrasco.
Carrasco about that program and so on, and how we can create that. Because the four-hour program, I'm not too worried about the middle school kids, because they'll just sleep late, okay? But some of the high school kids that want to graduate may need some additional work with us. The special ed department will be involved with some learning disabled kids, not emotional kids, to be providing services and so on for these particular. So it'll be a real good partnership, as we envisioned it, between the program and, and the Southbridge Public Schools. Again, we, we, we have expelled kids, but we, if we had a program for them, we could have done something. And now they become out of district in many cases, and things of that particular nature. And I think that this Culligan back there will say that $38,000, is it, for, for grow? Plus transportation? That's four kids.
I had another question regarding logistics and that special ed piece of it. Kids that are on IEPs aren't necessarily exempt from behavioral issues that fall outside of their diagnosis or IEPs.
Correct.
And I think Mr. Emberco kind of touched on it. How will we meet their IEP goals in the program? Will they go back to the school? How?
Yes, that's part of the plan, is that whatever, we would do diagnosis, we would provide additional services like we're required to do for IEPs.
And would that take place in the embusman program, or would they?
It can be both.
Both, okay.
Both within the program and then outside the program, additional time is required. So we've already had that conversation, and so, once we identify the students, once we get in there, we'll be able to work with that.
Fantastic. And the last question I had was regarding time on learning in our AIP.
This, this meets the minimum requirements.
It does.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just, just, in the fall, I, Mr. Hamel invited us to visit a program in Philadelphia, so I took two of the assistant principals and, and the adjustment counselor at the middle high school, and we went to visit two programs in Philadelphia. One was a disruptive students' program, and what we saw there was pretty big kids, and they were engaged. The counselors worked with them very carefully, the instructors and so on, and we were impressed. And then we went to a dropout prevention program, not a dropout, a recovery program in the city of Philadelphia, and their requirement was that they wear a white shirt and tie. And so there's a whole process of dressing and so on, and they were all dressed and so on, and I asked the success ratios. And then after we met the three middle high school staffs, they said, can we start this tomorrow? I said, no, it's going to take us a little while. But we investigated this, and then there's also one program that they have in Massachusetts in Revere, not, not exactly like this program, but something embusman runs. So this is fairly new for Massa, for New England.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Thank you, Mr. Hamel, for coming.
Thank you.
My first question to you is about the success. You have a lot of your performance outcomes and high percentages of overall success. What happens when you run into an issue where the child isn't responsive to your program, and it looks as if you are going to have a failure? How do you determine your success? And if you find a kid that just really, or if we find that we have a student that just really isn't meeting up to the expectations of your program, what is an alternative beyond you?
Okay. When we look at a student, if they're not being successful, if you remember that slide that I had up where it was the intake, where we assess and evaluate, prescribe, implement, assess, and tweak. That continuous improvement model, when we look at student instruction, is really key. We're not waiting a semester or marking period. We're, we're checking about a month every six weeks. As we do one-on-one instruction, that teacher's really seeing, okay, they're really struggling here. What can I bring in? So as we move through our interventions, and we start triaging that, if they're not finding the kind of success that they should be, we're engaging the district partners, because maybe it's a special ed issue. There may be other academic pieces in play that this program is not equipped for. It's a behavioral program, maybe they need some more intense special education services. At that point, then, it's a discussion with the district, do we need to reevaluate from a special ed standpoint? So it's, it's getting that team around the table, and, okay, let's problem solve. Let's look at it. Here's what we're seeing, and start sharing that data.
Okay.
And you had a second part, and I think I missed it. What was the second part of your question?
I don't even remember. Oh, I just didn't know if there was something after you. If we found out that even after all these interventions and collaboration with the district, we're still finding that there isn't enough grow, I think you mentioned growth percentile is something that you focus on. If, if we have an individual that isn't meeting that level of a growth percentile, what do we do with that?
And I think that I-
With that person?
The answer to that is special education, testing, and then seeing the appropriate placement for this. If this intervention didn't work, we go to the next one.
Sure. Okay.
Right.
Good.
Okay? No, it's not, this isn't going to work for every student.
Absolutely.
But what does work for the fact is off-campus. And my experience, again, has been that you'd set this program up at the middle school over there, they're within their social milieu, and by being away from it, it creates an opportunity. I want to go back to the middle high school where I can impress and so on. So this, this creates, I, I use the term, I, you know, so earn their way back into the regular population.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Conley?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you again.
Good evening.
For coming out this evening. And they might pertain to the superintendent as well as Mr. Hamel, so I'm not sure who could answer these questions. But my first one is, are the students in this program allowed to participate in the extracurricular activities or the arts in the school district? Or do they have their own separate programs?
We, we, it would depend on the student, okay? If it's beneficial to that student to participate in athletics or other programs, we would review that. But it's not going to be an automatic.
My other question was, who will be evaluating these teachers in this program? I know you touched upon it, but I'm not sure if we knew that answer.
Okay. In that these will be embusman employees, the embusman staff, both our regional managers and our regional vice presidents will be evaluating the center director and the instructional staff. With that said, the district administration will have input on those individuals as we do their evaluations, because part of their evaluation is, is how well are they a team player with our district partners? So we do seek out that input. So it will be a joint evaluation.
And how, do we know how the transportation will work with the students to get to and from the program?
We'll see who they are where they're at. I mean, obviously, that Col Avenue is centrally located, and my understanding is that a substantial portion of the students that went there walked. And I think a little exercise is good.
Thank you. Do we know who would be administering the state test and how much more that might cost for the district?
It won't cost anymore, though, but don't-
No, no.
With regular.
We will, we will administer the state test. We work with the district on making sure we're proctoring as prescribed by the state, working within those testing windows, getting materials back to the district for, you know, scoring and whatnot by the state. So we work very closely with the district to administer those.
And they'll be trained in how to administer the MCAS and things like that?
Yes.
So it's done appropriately?
Correct.
Great. My other question was, I know we've mentioned that the site will be at Colav, but do we know the proper workspace to get this up and running, and if there'll be any additional overhead to the district to run and maintain this program?
We already identified possible areas upstairs. A couple of rooms that we have upstairs are currently being used by the collaborative, would be set up for them, and then any setup costs will be borne by embusman. They would provide all the material supplies, the computers, et cetera.
Absolutely. It's a turnkey solution for the district.
Our responsibility is to provide a site for them, pay for the lectures again, and the heat and so on.
Now, who provides the IT service?
We do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, briefly, I just have a few questions, too. Sorry, everybody. What if a staff member is absent? Does, you know, you have a limited number of staff there on-site. What happens if somebody's absent or ill?
We work, we have coverage plans, so if we have a staff member that's absent, if it's going to be a prolonged absence, we'll bring in staff to cover, make sure that it's at the appropriate level, so it, it won't go uncovered.
Our contract is for them to provide adequate, appropriate staffing. That's their responsibility.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you mentioned that the program is a four-hour compressed day, and I read somewhere it runs seven to five, so it's like high school is one four-hour block, middle school is a second?
Those will be, when we actually sit down and start looking at the actual schedule, we'll work with the district on, what are those natural start and stop times? We put in the seven to five as a broad range.
Okay.
So the, the actual start times will coincide with busing, school starts, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have to coordinate transportation and so on, once we identify the students.
And lastly, did I hear you say that you would offer some professional development to the district? Is that, did I hear that, or I misunderstood?
Whether there's an opportunity for us to offer or to work together, if the district's pursuing PD that coincides with where we are, again, we want that collaborative piece to be there. That's the main goal.
I, I think that's one of the benefits, is to see a successful program, because we've had programs, and we currently have programs where we have brand-new teachers in it and so on, and they haven't been as successful as we want them to be, so, so we could, so it's, I, what I hope is a symbiotic relationship. We'll learn from them for a while.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your coming this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Buzz, I was, I'm sorry. What would be the next step?
Next step is attorney is reviewing the contract.
Okay.
And you have a preliminary review of that, and I would, and negotiate with them. Once the attorney reviews the contract, I'll bring it back to you to review, and if you feel it's appropriate, then we would assign a contract for them to start, and then they would be able to start getting the building ready for a September program. And then we would be working with the middle high school administration, the special ed department, to identify potential students. They will go through the interview process and set that up.
Thank you.
So it'd be a sequential approach.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number 10, report of the finance director. Is there any report this evening?
Um, no, Madam Chair. I will have the May budget report on the next school committee meeting.
Thank you very much. And report of the superintendent, Mr. Emberco?
Yes, it's my pleasure this evening, they've been sitting patiently in the back of the room over there, to bring the two new principals that we appointed for this school year. We have Ms. Melissa Earls, who's the principal of Southbridge Middle High School, and Mr. William Bill Latoy, principal of Charlton. Would you please come up, please? I'm pleased to say a few words about these two individuals. Number one, they're local residents. I think that's important, because one of the, the issues that we want to create in the Southbridge Public Schools is consistency. And consistency of administrators is one of our major goals. You've had tremendous churn in the district of staff, superintendents, principals, teachers, and support staff, et cetera. And these are during interview process. They both have committed to being in the Southbridge Public Schools for a number of years. I don't want to say how many. Bill Latoy is a Southbridge High School grad and a local resident, and he was glad and anxious to come home. Both of these folks are seasoned, experienced educators. They both have lengthy administrative experience. And I look forward to them setting the kind of tenor and atmosphere and so on of inclusion, collaboration, and all the things that we're looking for at both Southbridge Senior Middle High School and at Charlton Street School. I'm a firm believer that leadership sets the tone. You put good leaders in, schools will improve. So I'm going to give you Ms. Earls first, an opportunity to say a few words, and then Mr. Latoy second.
Sure. I'm not that seasoned. Gets me a little nervous when he calls me seasoned. I am currently a principal of an elementary school in Springfield where I've been for three years. And we just underwent a turnaround process in a removal from probation to gain status in Level III with some DESI commendations. So that's my most recent experience. I like doing turnaround work. I like doing inner-city work. Prior to that, I have district-level experience. And I began my career teaching at the secondary level. I was formerly a Spanish teacher. I'm 2000 graduate from Boston College with a master's and a 1996 graduate from the University of Notre Dame with an undergraduate degree. And I have recently underwent my retail, which is the Sheltered English Immersion Program certification through the Department of Ed as well. I live in Sturbridge with my husband and child.
She says she lives closer to Southbridge than she does to San Diego.
I do. I live about four minutes from Cole Ave, so I'm really close. We own a house, so we're not moving anytime soon. Good? Turn it over to Bill.
Turn it over to Bill. Say hello to all those locals.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back here in Southbridge. I started working in Southbridge and moved on and gained my administrative experience. Worked as an assistant principal at a middle school and currently an interim principal. And it's just a great experience to be able to come back to the district, bring some of the initiatives. We are a Level III school as well. So working with DSAC and working with DESI and a lot of those initiatives to be able to work and help the town in that aspect as well. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want to come shake hands?
And we have a couple more positions to fill. My hope is to have them completed by next week.
Thank you for that. Agenda item number 12 is school committee actions. I previously notified the school committee that I was just going to change the order that was on the posted agenda. So I'm switching A and B. So first will be a vote to appoint Patricia Gardner, superintendent of Southbridge Public Schools, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. This is subject to successful contract negotiations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Condon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Before I open for discussion, I would just like to explain how, to the public's benefit, how we came to this agenda item this evening. As you know, the school committee is facing some extenuating circumstances. We had what we thought was a plan in place to retain Mr. Nemberko for the 2014-2015 school year. We were actively engaged in contract negotiations with the superintendent when he became ill. When he returned from his leave, he just notified us that he was unable to continue day-to-day operations. So we were faced with a very tight timeline. And our primary concern has been and continues to be stability, continuity, and providing a seamless transition for the district. In order to provide due diligence, I consulted with both the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I was advised in no uncertain terms that it's really too late to conduct any type of search for the 2014-2015 school year and that the potential superintendent candidates, the pool of potential superintendent candidates and even interim superintendents, due to the tight timeline, the timing of everything, is pretty thin. I was asked by both, well, I actually spoke to a total of probably six people, all of whom, one way or another, said, are there any internal candidates you might consider? I want to say that Ms. Gardner was an obvious choice. She has served as acting superintendent during Mr. Nemberko's leave of absence. She possesses superintendent licensure from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. She received her master's degree from Columbia College in South Carolina and is currently a doctoral candidate at American International College in Springfield. She has served the district as director of teaching and learning since last August. And previously, she was a principal and vice principal for several Massachusetts communities. In addition to all that, she did serve as director of the Center for Teacher Education at Westfield State University. And with that, I will entertain more discussion on the motion. Mr. Alivo?
I would like to make a motion to amend that action to say interim superintendent.
Okay.
With that being said, I think that she is qualified to do the job. I know that it has been said that it is too late to start a search committee, and I understand that. But I do think that with the coming year, that we will have to put a search committee together. And if we start to look at that now, I think it'd be great. And I absolutely welcome Ms. Gardner to apply for the position at that point as well. I think that stability is what is important. And nothing speaks to me louder than the students of this school district and the chaos and the, that has been in, in changing principals, in changing teachers, with teachers worrying about whether they're going to have jobs or not. I mean, their job is to teach our students. And I think that we, as a district, need to do our due diligence and really interview whatever candidates are out there with this upcoming year. I know that this district has been through the wringer, and everyone is apprehensive about the leadership. I mean, we're all in it for the same reason, and that is the education of our children. And with that goal in mind, I think that we should move forward in coming up with a search committee in the upcoming year as well.
Okay, so Mr. Alivo made a motion to amend the agenda item. Is there a second on that motion? There's no second on your motion, Mr. Alivo. The motion fails. Just for informational purposes, the, there is no, the interim is not a legally defined term in Massachusetts. That's what the Mass Association of School Committee Executive Director conveyed to me. The interim is not a legally recognized term. Whether somebody's interim, acting, or superintendent, they bear all the powers of that office.
Understood. But on the website, Mass Association of School Committees, they have jobs posted right now for interim superintendency. In Oxford, in Beltratown has reopened it, and Millbury Public Schools, Douglas Public Schools. So whether it's not a word or whatever, they advertise the jobs on their website.
Thank you. That motion failed. Is there any other discussion on the main agenda item? The vote to appoint? Mrs. Condon?
Could we ask Mrs. Gardner some questions?
Sure. Ms. Gardner? Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Condon?
Through you, Madam Chair. Ms. Gardner, I just wanted to know what goals you would have for yourself as superintendent for the district for the year?
Thank you. Well, I think unfortunately, we are Level IV and have an advanced improvement plan. But I think fortunately, we are Level IV and have an advanced improvement plan. I think the improvement plan is something that is the focus of all of us right now. As you know, as all of you know, Southbridge schools haven't just come under fire, been underperforming in the last year. It's been long-going, more than 10 years. And I think now that we have formed a team in central office and we're hiring principals who will share the vision of what the AIP is, is to look at rigorous standards for students, is to look at professional development for teachers, it's to use data-driven instruction. And it's also to increase the participation of the community and to build the trust of the community. So I think the four standards of the advanced improvement plan are the best plan that we can have moving forward.
Thank you. My other question was, why do you feel that you're qualified as a superintendent of the school district?
That's a great question. You know, I think people want to know that. I believe that I am qualified. I mean, first of all, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts says I am with a license. But, you know, and that's kind of flippant. I don't mean it such. But, you know, I am licensed. But besides that, I'm a lifelong educator. I love public schools. I'm a product of public schools. My whole family is a product of public schools. And for me, this has been a journey. I come from a background where my grandmother graduated from eighth grade and worked in a cotton mill her entire life. And I come from a family that valued education because of hard work that people in my family worked to get myself and my brothers and my cousins into college. So first of all, just from a very pure level, I love to see students achieve. And I think for me, I began my career as a high school English teacher and a coach, and I thought that I would be a college-level coach at some point in my life. And in another twist, I decided that the academic piece was much more important for me than coaching. And that was a hard decision when I was in my twenties. But as I grew as a teacher, I realized that there were other things that I wanted to do. And I loved teaching, and I still consider myself a teacher at heart. But I moved into being a teacher-coach. And then from there, I moved into being an assistant principal. And then I moved into being a principal. And as you change seats in education, your view is so different. And sometimes when I listen to teachers talking about what they think or what they feel, I think, wow, sometimes I wish I was still sitting there and I had the autonomy that a classroom teacher has. But my goal has been to have input and to help school districts turn around. I left, when I left South Carolina as a high school teacher, I left one of the top-performing high schools in the country at the time, Sumter High School. It's an Air Force town. We had a lot of money. And I took a job in the public schools of Springfield. And it was an amazing experience for 11 years as a teacher and then as administrator in the Springfield schools. And especially there, I learned to love turnaround work. I loved to work with students that needed the extra push-up, that needed the extra support and the extra care of teachers and administrators who wanted them to succeed. And it's been a great journey. And so for me, coming to Southbridge, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that I've had this year as a director of teaching and learning. When I resigned from Turner Falls High School, we had turned it into a top high school in Massachusetts. And when I interviewed for this position and I had an opportunity to come work for a master superintendent, it was a humbling experience for me. And I certainly was looking forward to another year with Buzz. But when the opportunity arose for me to step up and take a leadership position in his absence when he was sick, I was very humbled, but I was very proud to do it in Southbridge. And so I think my time here this year, for the time that Buzz was out, I did my absolute best, and I think that we stayed above water. And I think we continued on the path that we had sought out this year. And I know that this job is going to be hard work and it's going to be long hours. But I'm here long hours, and most of you know that. Olivia Quinney knows my car. But I look forward to the challenge of working in this. And I think that my background is in English teacher. I think having worked in higher ed and seeing what students really need to get there and what students are like when they don't have it when they get there. And I also think that other things in my background, in terms of helping students and helping them move forward, will help. I was an athlete in college. I was a pretty good high school athlete. And again, I had an opportunity to play sports in college. So I think that I can take a look at a lot of different activities that help us help students stay in school. And I think my background in working with turnaround schools and working with diverse populations is something that I can bring to the table here. And I can say that I am very proud to work in Southbridge. And it hurts me sometimes when I hear people talk about Southbridge in a negative way because I can tell you, in the schools that I've been in, we have some of the most amazing students that I've ever seen. I mean, I've been carrying boxes through the high school and have had young men asked to carry them for me. And you don't see that everywhere. So I think that we are in, going in a really good direction. And I think that we are making changes that are going to bring us to the forefront of education in the Commonwealth. And we're hiring wonderful people to go with the people who have stayed. I think there are so many teachers who have made commitments to the system. And I think we owe it to them to provide a working place that they want to be in, where they feel safe, where they know that they have a job tomorrow. And, you know, we will continue to promote the best teachers and to look for the best teachers and to encourage those teachers who are struggling because the students in this town deserve that. And that would be my pledge as superintendent.
Another question? Sure. How could the school committee help you with that?
I've said this before. Next year will be my 30th year in public education. I started teaching high school English when I was 21. And it's been an amazing journey. And having taught in different states and in different parts of the country even, not just different states. I think the school committee is extremely strong and extremely intelligent. And I'm not saying that. I say this behind your backs. I think the fact that you support education and that you all have backbones that many people could not have, I think that's what our students deserve. I think that's what this town deserves. And the support of any superintendent in this position needs brave people who put kids first. And I know that's hard, and I know that, you know, it makes going to the grocery store difficult sometimes. But, you know, I'm very proud of all of you that you stand up and that you do what is right for children. And I know putting me forward without a committee is difficult. And I appreciate the trust that you have in me. And I will absolutely do my best, whatever it takes, to continue us moving forward because I know that you are behind the school system. And that's incredible. You don't find that many places. And as I've said, I've worked in a lot of different communities. And to have a school committee like this is a once-in-a-lifetime chance that all of us can move this district forward.
Thank you.
Just more of a comment.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to state publicly that I am fully in support of appointing Ms. Gardner as superintendent of schools for one year. While the superintendent was out on leave, Ms. Gardner has stepped in and helped run the Southbridge Public Schools. She has expressed a desire to stay here long-term and is committed to taking this district from its underperforming status. During this year, my role and commitment to the community is to evaluate the job performance of the superintendent. I will work with my peers to help create this evaluation tool to measure Ms. Gardner's performance throughout the year. My role in not wanting to form a search committee is that I didn't want to waste the money in hiring a search committee when Ms. Gardner has already proved herself as a worthy candidate and has stepped in to run the school district when Superintendent Nemberko was out on medical leave. Our children do deserve the best. And at this time, I feel Ms. Gardner is the best candidate for this job. She has over a year experience in this district and understands the demographics of our community. Choosing the leader of our schools is a difficult one. The superintendent and school committee oversee a $25 million budget and provide education for the children of our community. Our community has suffered because of our schools. Many people have moved out of town, and even more people choose to send their children to other schools in different towns. I believe that by appointing Ms. Gardner, she can help continue to move the district to a top-performing one that we can be proud of. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm just going to stay over here for Mr. Olivo.
Through you, Madam Chair. Ms. Gardner, I agree with a lot of the visions that you have for this community and for this school district. For me, it's not personal, it really is about business, and it really is about the students and the faculty and the families of this school district. The expectations for you as superintendent, regardless of residency, you need to be present at anything and everything relating to this school district that you possibly can. You need to earn the trust and the respect of this community. This district has been through, again, the wringer. And I think you, as the superintendent, need to show your commitment to this community, to the children of this district, and you need to prove to us that, that we should keep you as a superintendent, or at least to me. I mean, just moving forward, like I said, it really is about the students and really just trying to know that the person that we hire needs to be here, needs to have a thick skin, because this community is going to be there, and they're going to rip you to shreds for moving on without a committee and appointing you as the superintendent. It really does come down to, it's about showing.
Thank you, and I agree with you. I mean, I could not agree with you more. I think if you take a look at my past record, when I have been a building administrator, I was ever-present, and I think that in this new role, that, you know, that's my intention. And I have pretty big shoulders, having been in administration for a number of years. But I also have accepted a job with this school committee. I have never done anything, underhanded or undercut anyone to get this position. I have fulfilled my role to the absolute best of my ability. As I said, I wish Mr. Nembroke was staying for another year. We're extremely lucky that we had a true master superintendent here for a year, and you know, if he decided tomorrow that he wanted to come back for another year, I would gladly step back into my role of what it was. But with where we are going and with your support, I accept this position, and I will do it to the best of my ability. And when you, as Ms. Condon said, and thank you for your kind words, when you do my review, then you know, I will accept whatever your decision is. I mean, obviously, because I will have no choice on one level, but as a professional adult, having been in education for a long time, I will accept that decision. But you know, I like to win. I'm competitive, and I like to win. So for me, this is a situation of taking Southbridge somewhere good.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Gardner. I do not have any questions for you. I don't have a written statement, but I do have some thoughts going around in my mind that I'd like to convey. The first is that we're in this situation, you know, that we're in, and my life's philosophy has always been that you cannot always change the direction that the wind is blowing, but what you can change is how you fix your sails. And that's how I look at where I'm at as a school committee member here. The wind is blowing all around me, and I'm in the situation where I have to make a decision, and that decision is based on what is best for the kids in every classroom, what is best for the administration in our district, what is best for the families of the kids in our classrooms, what is best for our faculty members, and what is best for our community as a whole. And there's a lot of things that you have to take into consideration when you look at something like that. And for me, where we've been and where we need to go, consistency and stability is the number one, or the number two, top two priorities for me, that you already know the players, you already know the system, you already know the AIP, you wrote it. You have proven to me personally what your work ethic entails. I think what you've done so far has been outstanding. You're invested in our system. You want to be here. I know from working with you that you will not tolerate low performance, and that is something that is very, very important to me. We have been hearing the cloud of doom hanging over our district for over 10 years, and I've learned personally that it's not as easy as I thought it was going to be. You just don't switch around a couple of players and it magically changes. It is a long, tedious process that involves so many different people on so many different levels. But the way I look at it is, we are moving forward, we're nowhere near where we were last year, and the only, most logical place for us to go next is forward and upwards. And I have confidence in you that you will do your very best to move us in that direction. None of us know what the future will hold, but at this point in time, when I am sitting up here and need to adjust my sails, I want you to know that I fully support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions, but I did want to address the appointing of Ms. Gardner as the superintendent. I just looked up our policy, which I can't speak without reading, but was very familiar. Our, as a district, it states that the district's goals is to employ and retain personnel who are motivated, will strive always to do their best, and are committed to providing the best educational environment for the children. And I think that statement is the embodiment of the work ethic and the person in her current role that Ms. Gardner has shown us over the past year. I think she's been invested in this district above and beyond what is required of her position. She has worked very diligently with the state to get an AIP in place that can move our district forward, that is centered around children and providing them with the best education that we can provide. She has articulated very clearly her desire to be in Southbridge, her pride in being a member of the Southbridge School District. I think right now, we always seem to be in a point of transition, but I think that this is a tipping point. Consistency is what is essential. The AIP DESC has said that that is one of our biggest challenges that we need to overcome. I think Ms. Gardner has been in the district, she knows the AIP, she knows our demographic, she has what I recently articulated in our principal search committee that I expect of employees in this district as both a parent, a member of the school committee, and as a member of the community, is that anyone in a leadership role in this district not only believes that every child can learn, they expect, they have high expectations of parents, students, and teachers, principals, everyone underneath them, and that there is some accountability that is attached to that in order to move our district forward and to provide the best education for our children. And I think Ms. Gardner has shown that to us and to, and has proven that time and time again. Her willingness to step forward when Mr. Nembroke was ill and to take over the principal search committee, she did so very well. People that were involved in those committees spoke highly of how that was done. There were some issues that came up that were not easily handled and were handled well and very professionally, and were communicated to the school committee in a way that I think was not only appropriate, but was very professional. I think moving forward, our school district is in good hands. Is this the ideal that everyone wanted? Maybe not. Maybe this is exactly where we're supposed to be, and I believe completely that Ms. Gardner is not only qualified, and despite what the pool of interims, superintendents, whatever, looks like, I think she is the best candidate that there is to be had, and I think we are in a really good position moving forward into next year. And I thank you for your willingness. I know that it is not a, it is not typical for a superintendent to accept a one-year position, and I thank you for indulging us all in that and allowing us to evaluate your progress moving forward in the year to see if this is the right fit for our kids, if this is, we are moving into a successful place. And so I thank you for that, and I thank you for the commitment that you've shown to this district, the work ethic, and I think, most importantly, the integrity that you've shown in your honesty and not necessarily saying what everybody's wanted to hear, but what the truth has been, and sometimes that's been hard to swallow. And despite that, I appreciate that quality of you, and I think that it will serve us well moving forward. So I would like to thank you again.
Thank you.
If everybody's through, I just would like to say a few words as well. I think the previous speakers have articulated my position too. I do know that Ms. Gardner was invited to apply for the superintendent position in other districts. It speaks well to how she is viewed among her peers on a statewide level. And personally, I would like to say also that my experience with Ms. Gardner has been that she has been very forthcoming, very hardworking, very impressed, and thank you for the work that you've done on this, in this district. The number-one concern that I have heard in, I don't even know how many years, but I'll just go back to even when I was running for this position, the number-one concern was regarding, and this concern was universal amongst students, parents, staff, community members, and it had to do with leadership turnover. We have a unique opportunity to keep the ship, use the sail analogy, keep the ship rowing in a positive, good direction. I think personally, it would be irresponsible to start anew at this point in time. This is both a logical and efficient decision for the school district. It will save time, it will save money, it will save anxiety among staff and among the school committee and everybody involved. And so I'm personally sorry that, in a sense, that there was not a process, so that more people couldn't see you and be exposed to you and your ideas and your demeanor and all that that constitutes. But we are in a time-sensitive situation, and I do believe this is the best resolution for the district. If there's no other comments, we need a roll call vote on the motion to appoint Patricia Gardner, Superintendent of Southbridge Public Schools, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, subject to successful contract negotiation. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstention?
Thank you. The motion carries. Congratulations to you. The superintendent would like to speak.
First, I want to compliment the school committee for taking bold action in appointing Ms. Gardner as superintendent. And the reason I say that is that the naysayers out there were hoping that you would have a search committee so you could create more controversy, more tumult, more chaos in the school system, and then you would be accused of not having the bravery to be leaders and making difficult choices. I needed to say that because it's important, and you'll always be accused of not following a process, and so there's no state regulation, law, or so on. It's the school committee's prerogative to appoint a superintendent. I think you made the best possible choice, even if you had a process and a search. I've been doing this job for decades now, and I've been in Massachusetts for almost 20 years, and I know what's out there. And I was fortunate when Ms. Gardner applied for the position. I quickly recognized her abilities, her strengths, her character, and her leadership. And that's been exemplified in the very difficult year we've had here. I had no intentions of getting sick, and while I was out, she filled in admirably. And I think that the goal of this school system, when I came, was to create stability. And out of chaos, we were able to do that last year. We have budget that passed. I was proud to say at the subcommittee meeting with the town that Southbridge Public Schools will not lay off anyone for financial reasons this year, whereas many communities around us are going through severe financial crises. We have put into place many programs that will move this district forward and out of Level 4 status. It took experienced leadership, it made many, I made many difficult decisions, and I would have been devastated had you voted to open up a search and create opportunities for people to sit in the back of the room and say, wow, this is great, we'll have someone who'll come in and we'll just, we'll have to be accountable for anything again. And we can have another couple of years we can blame the school committee and so on for all of that. So this is the wisest choice, and I'm proud of the fact that Ms. Gardner will be able to carry on the work so many people have worked so hard to accomplish in this district. Like I said, we've straightened out the infrastructure. Without infrastructure, you can't move forward. We've fixed the budget so we're not freezing things, and people don't even know how much they have. And every time I appeal to 99 finds other things. We're still working on issues that have been going on for years here. I mean, we're subsidizing food service programs for non-public entities, and things of that particular nature. So what I expect, and I think Ms. Condon's first question was your goals for the Southbridge Public School System, is kids first. Kids first, not adults. Work to move us out of Level 4, and I think that can be done much quicker than people have envisioned. And that, and I've said this numerous times, is that, and I think you recognize that the quality of the schools in Southbridge will allow Southbridge to be a successful community. Education in this country is by zip code, and you have over $2 million going out of this district. We've heard the band play, we've added more music programs, we've added additional staff members, we've enhanced the athletic program. All of these things is to keep the kids in Southbridge and keep the families in Southbridge. The people can vote with their feet, when they all vote out, you'll have only the people that can't. And then you'll have a truly a low-performing district. And as was said before, she has a commitment to this school system. She said I'm going to be here for a while. The principals who are selected are also going to be here for a while, so you're going to have a consistency of leadership that you haven't had for decades. So I think that a brave choice, surely be criticized tomorrow by people sitting in their basements typing into things and so on, so, but that's the price of leadership. And I just want to, again, compliment, and I look forward to Ms. Gardner's success here and that I can sit back and say, yeah, I had a small part in moving Southbridge forward and upward. There's no reason for Southbridge to be Level 4. And one thing I can, and I said before, I can guarantee the test scores will improve this year, because we paid attention to them. Now, there's no other reason than that. We pay careful attention to administration of the MCAS, and this is what the state evaluates us on, and communities and parents evaluate us on, is what are the scores of that town? What level are they, et cetera? So we have to pay attention to that. So I just want to stop right there and just congratulate Ms. Gardner, and I will do everything I can to ensure that she is successful, and if she is successful, Southbridge Public Schools will be successful. If Southbridge Public Schools is successful, the town of Southbridge will be successful. Just follows in that progression. So thank you, and...
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 12B is a vote to approve a donation in the amount of $850 to West Street School from the Southbridge Credit Union. Do I have a motion?
Sumo. Sumo.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Olivo seconded the motion. This donation, just so you know, is earmarked for a fifth-grade field trip to Old Sturbridge Village. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Southbridge Credit Union for this donation in support of the Southbridge Public Schools. They do a lot for the community, and I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for the $850 donation for the Old Sturbridge Village field trip. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
I understand that it's for the field trip. Was there any precipitant to this? Do we have a, does West Street School have a partnership with the credit union? Do we know, or just $850 to go on field trip?
That I do not know. I don't know if it was a solicitation or just an out-and-out donation, but I know that it is earmarked for the trip to Old Sturbridge Village. Mrs. Uteakis was instrumental in coordinating this, I understand, so we thank her.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing now a roll call, please.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Vote 12C. On the agenda, the vote read, in the original agenda, the vote read differently. Since the agenda was posted, the acting town manager asked that I just change the wording. It doesn't substantively change what we're doing, but this is, the vote now reads, "It's a vote to declare surplus and available for disposition by the town as it deems appropriate, the building formerly known as the Mary E. Wells Middle School located at 82 Marcy Street in Southbridge." Do I have a motion?
Sumo.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion? For the public's benefit, I guess that the, it was unclear from a prior vote in a prior calendar year, and so this vote is just being taken to procedurally clear that building for the town to dispose of it. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion passes. There is no unfinished business this evening. I'd like to note that the next regular school committee meeting will be held Tuesday, June 10th, 2014, in council chambers. At this time, I would open this up for member forum if anybody has anything they'd like to say. Mr. Olivo?
I would just like to touch on the Reach Out and Read program and thank the volunteers on behalf of the PTA who have volunteered to come out and read at the different schools. And I think it's gonna be a fun time. I am gonna be one of the readers, so I look forward to that. I would also like to thank Ms. Fribata and staff, Mr. O'Quinn over to Eastford Road School for their Memorial Day celebration, in which I was invited to be a guest speaker. It was a great time, and it was pleasing to see the behavior of the students and the attention that even the kindergartners and the preschoolers paid to the speech, and they also got to try on some uniforms that I brought in, which was, which was pretty cool to see. In one picture, I see four young men, or young boys, who are standing there in my uniforms and can only think that this is the future of our country, and the patriotism that they showed that day was phenomenal. I would also like to announce the student lunch at Eastford Road School tomorrow, Thursday, 29 May. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Congdon? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that I heard from various members of the community that the prom went real well at Union Station, that the juniors and seniors were very respectful and that it was a great event for all. And on Friday, at West Street School, there's a parent lunch, and it's also twin and triplet day, and on Friday, at Charlton Street School, it's dress-up day as well as the parent lunch. Thank you.
Thank you. To my right, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to sincerely congratulate our two principals this evening. I look forward to working with both of them. I appreciate their commitment, I appreciate their experience, and I wish them both and us all a very successful year coming up in the fall. Second of all, I wanted to give a special thanks to Mrs. Julie Hurley for all of her efforts in the Time to Shine Talent Show that took place in our community, which involved all of our kids from grades one through five. A lot of our kids up here participated in that, and it was just a great, great event for them to help build their self-confidence and give them the attention and the true appreciation that those kids deserved, and it couldn't have been done without of all of Julie's hard work. So I wanted to thank her for that. She's a tremendous asset to our community. And other than, like Mr. Olivo, I will be reading tomorrow. I'm over at West Street School in Ms. Peashy's room, and I very much look forward to that. So thank you.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to also thank the Southbridge Arts Initiative, which is led by Mrs. Julie Hurley, for their donation of the band instruments that took place at the Time to Shine Talent Show, that they donated instruments that will be used for the fifth-grade band at both Charlton Street and West Street School, and Mr. Ruben Akker and Mr. Heath were there to accept those donations. I also wanted to thank the community and Dr. Garcia and the marching band, as I was able to participate in observing the Memorial Day celebrations and tributes that were held throughout town on Monday, and the band did a really phenomenal job in that, as did the town, and thank you to all who came out to support and remember the sacrifice that so many veterans of our community have made. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say, Mrs. Donovan reminded me that earlier today, we were forwarded a message that was sent to the superintendent by Ms. Hurley, and she took the time, after doing all the work she did, to write the superintendent and thank some district personnel. So I just want to recognize those people as well. She recognized Ms. Annalise Rozo, who played an essential role as choreographer and music coordinator. She recognized Mr. O'Quinn, who volunteered at the time for the event two years in a row. She said it meant a lot to the young, for the young children to see him rolling up his sleeves and jumping in to assist with the lighting. She'd like to also thank Mr. Montigny, who videotaped, this is Michael Montigny, who videotaped the show and has been very supportive, and also Joel Delgado, who was the custodian and would help out with anything that was needed when asked. So I just want to recognize those district employees as well.
Just one more thing, Madam Chair. I did want to mention the Memorial Day Parade that did take place here in town, and comment on the Southbridge marching band, Middle High School marching band, and what great performance that they did during their marching. I know that carrying some of those drums, that whole way, it can be kinda taxing on the body. They did a great job, and they played very well. And also to those students in the Girl Scout and Boy Scout troops that came out to show their appreciation and remembrance of this holiday and remembering the veterans.
Thank you. We now have a vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3, and the chair so declares. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. For the public, the meeting will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you very much, and have a pleasant evening.